We're going to call the Finance Committee to order. And we have three items, and then we have further discussions concerning the budget. First item before the Finance Committee is a resolution that deals with change order with milestone construction concerning water and sewer improvements to Razorback Greenway. Is somebody going to, Ben's going to address this?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so yeah, this is a change order to add the water relocation to the Razorback Greenway relocation, realignment project. It was always intended that this water line would be relocated. It was just a timing thing. We got our plans done before they got their plans done. Now they're ready to do it. Their commission has approved the payment of this $326,000. We'll be reimbursed 100% for this, but the contract will be in our name and then they will reimburse us.
The Water Department would.
The Water Department will, yes.
And where is the realignment?
It's just a relocation of the existing water line in Emma. So it goes from just a little bit west of Emma, I mean of Holcomb, to the Box Cove.
Well, this prolong the timeline.
It will not prolong the timeline. It's been part of it the whole time. We did look at the timeline and we actually have some reasonably good news. We think that we'll be able to get the street open around spring break. And we think we'll be able to get the Razorback Greenway crossing open around Valentine's Day. And I say that because we're in, we're getting ready to go into some of the worst weather times of the year. So it kind of depends on.
Did you put those, did you put those in the right order?
So, yes.
So the crossing will be done before the streets open?
We hope to put the bicycles across.
You're talking about Emma Avenue Crossing?
It's part of the Greenway realignment project. Okay.
Seems like a no brainer, I guess. Anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion, move the resolution forward. That's for approval.
Okay. Any further discussion one way or the other? Not all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ben. Second item has to do with the Architect Services for, contract for library. This was tabled from last committee meeting. Can you go back over that with just a little bit?
Yes, this is a resolution to enclose our existing courtyard space at the library. It will add about 3,000 square feet to our facility. And our intent is to use this as a programming and event space with a focus on services for family and children. But it would be a multipurpose space that would give us some flexibility moving forward.
And I know this resolution is 75,000, not to exceed 75,000? Is that the total cost or is the, I had in my head that the, that the Foundation Board was paying something? Okay, okay, thank you.
Of the architect fees? Thirty-nine of this 75 or 75 plus 39? Seventy-five plus 39.
That's right. Our, our foundation had funded an amount that would give us an initial concept that we could present to you, which we did in September. But this additional amount would get us to buildable plans that we could then present as.
I got you, I remember now, yeah. This takes it, this gets us the full plans that we would need.
Correct.
Whenever we're ready to move forward.
I move forward this to council with recommendation of approval. I'll second that motion. Is there further discussion concerning this resolution? All right, we have a motion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the opposition rules. Not sure.
It was.
I'd say I was, I'd say it was one, four, and whatever else against.
I think it was two, four.
Okay.
And then be one, two, three, four against.
All right. Not sure where that leaves the library, but.
There's no, Ernest, there's no restriction on when it can come back?
No.
Okay. I guess let's just get together and we'll discuss it more and see. I'm going to need to hear from folks probably what, what the issues are that maybe we can address, okay? I haven't, I've only heard from one council member and I don't know what the rest are thinking, so, thank you.
Thank you. Third item on the agenda has to do with the purchase of snowplows by the Street Department.
Yes, I've got two.
I know it's not really called the Street Department, but that's what I've always called it.
It works.
Public works.
We have two 1990 model chat trucks that have been red tagged. And they really limit us to get our pre-treat route done in time ahead of a storm. So this is two trucks that we can use year round, not just a chat truck. They're smaller dump trucks that'll fit the residential streets.
So it just seems kind of odd, James, on, I'm pretty sure this is paid for out of turnback funds, correct?
Yes.
Which is great, but it just seems kind of odd that we're doing this on the night that we're discussing the budget. Why is this not in a budget item?
This is, extra funds is still in my budget to move, to pay for these two trucks.
The funds that are in your budget from this year?
Yeah.
This, this is actually, this resolution's written so that it will be paid for out of the general fund, the unrestricted funds.
That's the one that we have a little over 20 million in right now. Right.
And so we could budget this item, but we could go ahead and buy them now as well. It's, it's the same money, six one way, half dozen the other. We could add it into his budget and he could order them in January, or we could use some of the surplus now and order them now.
But I guess my point was, it just seems odd that we're doing it on the same night.
Well, he, he has brought this to us. We've been working on this for about a month now to try to get all the numbers in, so.
Do we know how long it'll take for, for those to come in once they're ordered?
They didn't give a date. They just said as soon as we can order them, that they'll get them going. Cause you know, with supply and demand, it's hard to get a date of arrival.
Is this retiring any vehicles? It would retire them, you would sell them?
Yes.
The surplus funds that are in this year's budget that we haven't spent, is that a combination of different accounts that we're getting it out of or just?
No, this is the, out of the general fund, you, you've got about 20 million that's unrestricted. And a lot of that, you know, we, we had a budget surplus this past year of, you know, four and a half million, but we ended up with a nine and a half million surplus, just because we didn't spend as much as we budgeted, which is usually the case. So that account just continues to build and now you got, you got over 20 million sitting in that account.
Do we know if we're risking any price increases or anything, James? Have they, do we have any idea if we wait?
They didn't say.
Okay.
But they give us the discount for ordering early and paying for them.
So sometimes we end up with snow and ice storms all the way into March. And it would just be handy if we go ahead and get these now instead of waiting until January's budget turns.
I make a motion, we move this resolution forward with recommendation for approval.
Second.
All right, have a motion to forward with recommendation is any further discussion? Not all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right, thank you very much. That's the agenda. Now that we had scheduled a continued conversation concerning the 2023 budget. Was that a week, week and a half ago?
You know, a week ago, last Friday.
We had basically made it through all the departments. And scheduled tonight for the opportunity for anyone to ask any questions of any of the department heads that might be here. Or make any changes to the proposed budget. Or just any questions that anyone might have.
Jeff, the.
Or we can have conversation about moving the budget forward.
Jeff, these, I think, Colby, you handed these out. These incorporate the changes that you.
Tonight?
Yes. These incorporate the changes that you all asked us to make on, during the budget meeting.
Okay.
And then there are a few other, he's got a cover sheet there that kind of explains some of it. Colby, do you have the, the total impact on the budget from these, from these changes or Cody maybe? I mean, positive, negative versus what we were, versus what the proposed budget was?
The big picture is going to be that we went from a $5 million surplus down to about a $4.3 million surplus. So about a $700,000 change.
Colby, would you mind going over that page, just a little bit?
We tried to mark down, take notes during the budget meeting of all the things that were discussed and suggestions made. I may have to have Cody up here to help me with some of this. In administration, we adjusted the mayor and city clerk pay. They were entered in with the other calculation, so their salaries, we, we caught that one were a little high. So we brought those back down to what is 6%.
They were really closer to what they should have been, but we took it back down.
I'd sent you an email a few weeks ago. The DSA was calculated with too much. The miscommunication there was probably on my end telling Cody, we were going to increase it to $150,000, but we increased it by 150. So we adjusted that. Transferred to the street, increased by 8,299. Oh, the certificate pay. Transferred to the court decreased by 23,000. I don't know exactly what that enters. Do you remember?
Okay.
Parks and Rec Trail Crew Leader Position, we adjusted that. There was a step correction to make. We, whenever we went in, in the Parks and Rec budget, Parks and Rec Director had omitted the uniform cost. We put that back in at 5,000, omitted utilities cost. We adjusted that back, added 175 in. It was suggested we remove the computer maintenance, reduce it by 10,000.
That was the suggestion at the meeting.
That's correct. So we took that suggestion and applied it, reduced that by 10,000. The pickleball courts that says C.L. Willie George Park, but that's actually Tyson Sports Complex. That's 300,000 we discussed for the pickleball courts. Engineering, go ahead.
That's all right.
Engineering, they had requested that we increase the mayor's proposal by 62,000 for professional services.
Did we discuss that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Ben Peters was there to discuss that one.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's just a 2022 change. There was one giant bill they have that got missed for 2022 that Ben ran across. And so we just went back in and changed the projection for 2022.
Okay, so that didn't affect.
It didn't, didn't affect 2023 budget at all on that one, just 2022.
Then for the police department, we were asked to include longevity pay. That totaled 364,722. We have added that in. We weren't, we weren't instructed to include that for fire, but it was mentioned to find out what that would cost. And I do have that number for you. It is 313,858.
What's social intern pay?
I think Chief's here, he can expound on that, but I think that there was a discrepancy.
Cause the number that I had on longevity was 200 and 231,700.
That's because they included that with benefits when I proposed it.
And the number that you had did not.
The number I included was just for it to be a bonus.
Okay.
And they added it as regular pay. So it then pays into LOPP and other things that weren't included.
When we pay by pay period, it affects LOPP over time, like affects everything down the line when you pay.
Okay, so I want to make sure everyone's clear on that because when we discussed it at the committee and moved it forward, the understanding on the police was that it was going to be 231,700, 231,700, and for dispatch, another 17,500. So because of the benefits, correct?
Correct. And when I mentioned it, I'd said that did not, did not include the city's part of the social security. But when they added it in, they added it as regular pay instead of a bonus. When I proposed it, it was as a bonus.
It still could be done as a bonus, correct?
Correct.
The only, my only concern with a bonus is that it doesn't sound like, I mean, I think incentive pay, you need to be able to count on every year for it to be effective. And I would wonder if, if as a bonus, if there's some way we could codify that, if you do it as a bonus, where we could put some kind of teeth behind a guarantee that, that that's going to, that that's something we're going to include every year.
Mayor, whenever we go back through and look at doing it as a bonus, some of those things are still going to have to be included, but it would be, it would save $17,000 to do it as a bonus.
Oh, is that all?
That's all.
Okay.
Really, only 17,000?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
What was the longevity pay for the firefighters again?
That totaled 313,858.
With the same type of benefits?
Same thing. It would take our budget surplus down to about 4 million if we included the fire.
What about the numbers that we got, I believe it was last week, about raising the pay the 16%?
So.
What was the total on that?
So the total, this was what we discussed about increasing the starting pay for police to 50,000. We knew that we would have to go in and you can't just start the entry level at 50 and then the guy who's been here for 20 years, he's starting lower than him. So we adjusted the whole scale appropriately by percentage. And the total price on that would be 2,290,037. That, that's what I was suggesting on that Friday, is instead of taking that out of our budget surplus that we're having, the, that will be 4 million, is to use the 2.29 million, do a resolution to take that 2.29 million out of our general unrestricted fund. So on January 1st, it would be appropriated to go towards police salaries. And that way it would not affect your 4 million budget surplus.
There was some question, a lot of discussion, Jeff, if you'll remember about the, I'm, Mike Lawson wasn't here. But the, and Brian wasn't either. But the, about the timing of it too. Would we want to do it? We, I'm confident we're going to have to do it at some point. But y'all talked a lot about whether to look at it again in March, look at it in July.
So this is 2.9 million that's not in the proposed budget?
That's right.
This is 2, 2.29.
2.29.
To me, this is just, I wasn't here Friday, but 2.9 million is, if, if, 2.3 is whatever the million is. That's a big ask that's not in the proposed budget. Our job is to look at the budget that's proposed and just to throw 2 million in there at the 11th hour is a little.
I would, I would say yes, but it's, the job isn't just to look at the budgets, all the finances. And the general fund is part of all the finances. So you, you have just as much control over the general fund as you do the budget. And this is a way, you could take it out of the, the budget, we'd still have a surplus.
What's the positive to doing it now as opposed to looking at it after the first of the year?
I think we're down, how many officers?
We're down 15.
We did something similar with the dispatch because we were seeing so much turnover. We were not paying the rate that other departments were, and that's helped stop the bleeding. We know that there's another, one of the other first-class cities in Northwest Arkansas is going to go to 50,000. And with recruits, we just feel like we need to fill these positions now. If we wait three months, you're saving 20% of 2.29 million.
I'm all for it. I've always voted for the police department. I'm just saying that.
Let me, let me speak to why it's not in the proposed budget, Mike. One thing, and I, and I brought this up that Friday. When we're doing the proposed budget and trying to get all these numbers together, many of these numbers are put together before, I mean, I had no, I had no clue that we would have a $5 million surplus in our budget, in our proposed budget. And we just didn't get back to everything. I didn't know Frank, you know, Frank asked me a couple of days before, said, do you mind me going ahead and talking to council about this starting, this, this pay scale that we know what state police, is state police already effective with theirs?
State police's starting pay is at 54,000.
54.
Fort Smith is raising theirs to 50,000 in July.
Right.
Next year. They haven't passed their budget yet, but the, the finances are already in place to take care of it. They raised, they had.
They raised a, they raised some extra money.
Sales tax rate to pay for it.
You were asking us to look at it again in July.
Well, I was asking for you to look at it again next year because I already know those two are in place and I think every other agency in Northwest Arkansas.
We don't know what Rogers, Bitville and Fayetteville are doing yet, right?
We don't.
And Fayetteville doesn't do theirs to.
They do theirs February, March.
Let me just say, and I, you know, we've all had time to think about this, including me. With the healthy surplus we have, I wouldn't, I mean, if you want to wait till July and look at it again.
Or March.
Or March. But there's nothing wrong with us leading once. And I mean, I, I was on, I was on a, a school board of a school district that, that, the, that worked very hard at trying to lead in teacher pay and other things. I think with the, with the open positions we've got right now, I think this would be a tremendous help. Like I say, I think we're going to be there in next year's budget anyway, but it's whether do you budget it for, for a whole year or do you budget it for 10 months or for six months?
Chief, I don't know you know exactly, but will this bring us up pretty, pretty close, you figure, with these other towns around?
With the ones that are going to go to this, yes. I mean, we, I expect everybody else, it'll put us ahead in Northwest Arkansas.
With the 6% and this also, right? That should, that's pretty good.
This is, I think this includes the 6%.
Does that include the 6%?
It does.
Oh, got you, okay, all right.
So what would you need if we wanted to pursue this?
Well, it, like I said, it can't. Yeah, it can come in one of two ways. If y'all want to just reduce your budget surplus, or if you'd like to use the 2.29 million out of the general fund, you could, we could write a resolution with instruction from council that would appropriate 2.29 million to go towards police salaries effective January 1st. And it would move that money at the first of the year.
But that could, would that, would they still approve it? If they wanted to do it in January, would they still approve it as part of the budget?
Ernest will have to speak on that. I think it's going to be a separate resolution. He's saying yes. I think it's going to have to be a separate resolution because you're appropriating funds out of the unrestricted general fund.
Which is, which is it about what now?
You're a little over 20 million. We're projected to have 22 and a half million by the end of the year. But we've had the, this last month was our biggest sales tax month ever. And so we may be at, you know, 23 million, we just don't know.
And, and for the budget, just for everybody in the room, we have, we have, we think, been very conservative on revenue projections.
Very.
To get, to get to that surplus that we've, we're showing right now.
It's similar to last year. We budgeted for a little over 4 million, ended up with over nine in surplus.
Cause we know there's going to be a slowdown and that is a concern and that's a legitimate concern. But we know we can, whatever, whichever way y'all want to go with this, do it, not do it, do it out of the budget, do it out of the, out of the general fund.
I like the.
We can ride it.
I, I like the idea of using it out of the unrestricted fund, doing a resolution, bringing it forward. What do we need to do to, do we just say do it? Do we need to do a motion to have it done or?
I think if we have instruction for the administration to write the resolution, I think whenever the budget is approved, we can bring this other resolution to you and approve it at a council meeting and it'll go into effect on January 1.
So it can go into effect on January 1, so Cody's not having to deal with retroactively.
That's right.
Going back and to the first of the year. So everybody will know what they're getting paid.
That's right.
I like that. I'd like to go that route.
So how did you come up with the percentage or the, the numbers?
We took the Johansson study and we took what we're currently paying. We broke it all out to find the percentage gaps between every position and we just prorated those gaps. So everybody would be increased by a certain percent reflective of the gap of the position above them. It would give an additional.
But now, the, the whole thinking here is that we're worried about the starting.
That's right.
Position. And that the hiring of starting positions, that's the part apparently recruiting for. So why?
Well, we're not just recruiting for starting positions.
Okay, well, that's my question.
And we're wanting to keep folks too.
So.
Well, that's longevity.
Yeah.
Just after I, after Colby did that, I talked to Fort Smith and they're doing the same thing. They're actually increasing their whole pay scale by percentage. I think theirs is 27%. So it'll be very similar to what was presented to you.
It, it does wean off to get to the 50. It starts at a 19% increase. That 6% was already baked into that. So the initial are going to be 19, the next level, I, I don't know it off the top of my head. I think it was like a 11%. And then the next one is something like a, yeah, the top end would be 6%. So it, it levels off, so not everybody's getting 19.
When it says 26%, it already includes the 6% that we were already looking at for this year? It's already in the budget?
The 6% is going to be part of that 19% to get them to the 50,000 starting pay.
Or 26.14.
Yeah.
Part of the 26.14.
Yeah, so that, whatever numbers on this sheet here, that 6% is put into that number, yes.
So again, is it a motion that we need to do or is it a? No, that's the way we handled the.
I make a motion that we have a resolution brought forward for 2.297 million dollars out of unrestricted fund for police pay to bring starting pay to 50,000.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? I'll stay in my position. I've always had the position that I understand about leading, Mayor. But I also feel like it creates a situation where now Fayetteville's going to say, well, Springdale did this, we got to beat them. Roger's going to say the same thing. I thought, or still do think, it makes more sense to look at it again in March. So I hesitate to do it now. I'd rather do it in March. The other problem I have with your motion is why would we take it out of general funds? Why not just include it in the budget? We're going to have a $5 million surplus anyway.
Right.
It, I mean, seems to me that I don't understand the thinking of why you take it out of general, just the general.
You, like I said, you can do either, but the thinking behind it is you're taking surplus of your previous years where you're not spending all that's budgeted. I mean, we're, we're having a nine and a half million dollar.
You have a surplus predicted.
Right.
So.
In reality, it's six, one, half dozen the other.
It's about the same way, I understand. So why, why, I don't know.
Well.
Is there an accounting, is there an accounting advantage or disadvantage either way?
You could do it either way, but it just gives you more room if you take it from the unrestricted funds that you have built a surplus up in and allocate that towards salaries. It doesn't affect the surplus.
But then next year, it would just be in the regular budget.
That's right.
It kind of, it kind of seeds, it kind of seeds this first year.
Yeah. You've been here a long time. I've been in and out of county. It's always been a competition, as long as I can remember.
And it always will.
It would, it always will be a competition. So I've.
Do you, do you feel that if we do make these, the longevity pay and the increase, that will we be able to be conservative moving forward, looking at this? Or I mean, it seems like we're always going to be trying to match, trying to beat, trying to match.
Yeah, good question, Randall. I mean, looking in my crystal ball. I, I think, I think other cities are going to, to Jeff's point, other cities are going to just do it too. But when we do the market studies like we did last year, that compares us with the market, then that'll be baked in too. I mean, they're going to, so, so we could.
So you're saying we're going to be behind?
We're going to be behind the market if we don't do it. Because the market's going to change. But, but if we're talking about doing it in March or July, then, then we'll still be okay with the market. Because we'll be, I, I just, I, the more, the more I've thought about it and the more. Because we'll be, I, I just, I, the more, the more I've thought about it and the more that I've, uh, you know, looked at the financial position we're in, I just, I think it'd be good to be out front more.
That's it. Currently, we have the funds now to do something like this. And even if there is a competition around in Northwest Arkansas, if, if our uh economy goes south, then our funding is gonna go south and we won't always have the option to do this. That will kinda mediate when that levels off. It'll fluctuate. And then a few years after that, if it rebounds, then we'll have that option again. And the cities will then compete again. It's, it's a lot like the teaching profession.
Sure, I just, you know, trying to be conservative, look at it conservatively.
Right.
I think you don't wanna erase somebody and then say, well, we don't have money, you know, ten years down the road.
No, I, I, I don't think, I mean, I guess you can never say that's never a possibility. But boy, if, if, if we got in that position, everything around us, everywhere would be falling apart for us to get in that position.
And I think the position that we're in right now is because we have been conservative with our budgets and it has allowed us to have a sur, a surplus to be had uh through this. And if, it's, it's very comfortable and it's very assure, reassuring to know that we're financially sound and be able to. There's a lot of cities that may not be able to be where we're at. And uh, I'm, I'm very comfortable where we're at right now with it.
Colby, refreshment, how many openings do we have? Chief, how many openings? Did you say fifteen?
Seventeen.
Fifteen right now would be seventeen.
Seventeen then.
Seventeen, okay. And are tho, are those patrolmen or are they what?
They're all patrol, those are all patrol.
They're all patrol.
Positions open as well, but that's, that's patrol.
And I believe, you know, we've even had to pull SROs out of the schools.
We have.
In order to, you know, keep, keep people. I think that is a huge issue.
So do we have any applicants in currently?
We do. We're going through the process with the, the last batch. We have a new test coming up. It'll probably be right at the first of the year. I think it's January the ninth. I may be off a couple of days. But our next test is in January.
So uh, just to be clear, we're not talking about five million surplus at the end of twenty twenty-three. We're talking about four point four.
If, before the fire incentive pay, you're, you're at four point three million.
Four point three.
Then if you do the fire.
We were saying five, I just.
You're really at about four, if you do the longevity pay for the fire department.
But, but according to this document that you handed out, right now it's four point three. You and I were saying five. I just wanted to make that clear.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, so I, I made a motion and there's a second.
I understand you made a motion. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I just wanna make sure that you're here with us.
I'm with you.
So is this a, oh yeah, you go ahead and take it from here if you don't think.
Any further discussion? Alright.
So this is, just so I'm clear, Brian, your motion, it wouldn't approve, you're not approving the budget. This is just changing what's been proposed.
This is just to propose a resolution.
It's just like we did uh Friday.
Right.
When we voted on.
Right.
The longevity.
Gotcha. It will be included in the proposed.
There was one other thing we voted on.
Can I, can I ask, i- is this just for the resolution for the salaries or does this include the fire?
This is, the motion right now is only for the two point.
Okay.
Two nine seven.
Yeah.
Still on, just PD only, yeah.
Sorry. Now we gotta clear.
Okay.
Well, he's.
The chairman.
Yeah, my eyes.
Any further discussion? Alright, motion to um amend the budget that's being forwarded to council.
I think it's amend the budget.
Hmm, okay.
It's to have a resolution written to take money out of unrestricted funds.
Well, it's, it is amended. No, it's not amended the budget.
It would be, it would be in, uh, to write a resolution to allocate two point two nine million from the unrestricted general fund into the police salaries. Uh, portion of our budget, of our twenty-three budget effective January first.
So we're not really even dealing with the budget.
This, this is a resolution.
We're changing the pay scale.
Yeah.
So Cody, how would you? I mean, we gotta, we gotta address it in the budget somehow.
Essentially, it will change the pay scale.
That's why I say, why don't we just put it in the budget?
Effective January one, which essentially would be a budget amendment when that, when it goes into effect.
Yeah, I think it's simpler, Brian, to change the budget.
This is the same thing we did with dispatch earlier this year, yeah.
Yeah, it just wasn't in, right in the middle of the budget process, yeah.
Yeah, we've got a budget to approve at some point.
Yeah.
And Cody, what, what's better for, what's better for the city? I mean, we, you know, we get audited every year. What's, what's a better way to do it? Is, or does it matter?
It, it, like Colby was saying, it can go either way. Um, my initial suggestion was why not just put it in the budget now? So.
Talk to him. You will do.
I'm fine with that. Do we need to, I, I can make a motion to withdraw.
I don't see a, makes a difference. Motion, he was gonna do the resolution to take it, to move it at the first of the year. That was Brian's motion.
Right.
Is to do a resolution, taking this money out of unrestricted funds.
Well.
So we're, we're talking to our head financial guy and I think we're all wanting to do it. We just wanted to find out the best route to go.
If. If you're wanting to do it out of the general, I just wanna give you all a, a number.
Double up, so.
I'm just making sure I don't give you the wrong number. Your budget surplus would go to one point seven million.
Is that?
From four point three.
Okay, from four point three, so it still doesn't include what we may do with longevity pay for fire.
If you did the police salaries, like what, and as a, if you wanted to do it where you just take it out of the budget, then you're looking at one point seven million as a budget surplus.
With all these other changes versus the four point. That we remain.
Four point two.
That's what I was saying. It, it gives you more cushion in your budget if you take it out of your unrestricted general fund.
So then we would have to do a, a budget amendment for the salaries in January.
On January first.
For police salaries.
Correct, if you, if you do it this way.
But the budget that, or the budget, the motion that's on the floor.
Yes.
Is the latter version.
Right.
Not the.
Yes, the resolution version.
Unless he wants to amend it.
Correct.
If it's just gonna be, if it's just going to cause the resolution to amend the budget, I mean, we've done that before. If this is, and if it's gonna allow us to have this cushion that Kobe's talking about, I like the cushion. So I'm not gonna amend my motion.
Okay.
If I may, Mike, can I add another, sorry, Jeff, can I add in another uh comment? If um, if we do the reso method, it allows us to go ahead and move forward with where the budget is at currently and it won't put it off any longer as well as getting it passed, but.
The lack we're doing right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where, where we do a separate resolution.
Correct.
To, to adjust the PD pay, okay.
Okay.
If, if we go and we put it into the budget for this year now, we'll have to go back and re, redo the book for you guys again like last time.
So that's the purpose of this meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, the only thing I want is if you make this change, I just want everybody to know what the price is gonna be.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to um request a resolution for this uh amount. Yeah, two point, whatever it is. To be taken out of general revenues fund. Alright, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, like sign. My only hesitation is I'd rather do it in March, so I'll vote no. Go ahead, Colby. So, no, wait, let me just clear up on that. Will you be bringing a resolution to council meeting?
Yes.
At the next?
At the next.
Council meeting. Okay.
So before you go, do we need to back up and look at this? We, we needn't look at this firefighter longevity pay? Is that?
That, it wasn't anything we were instructed to change, but it was, we were asked to look at it. And so that's why we got you a dollar amount.
Okay.
Um, so we can, um, it would just reduce the, the budget surplus um by three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
And it would just be done as part of the budget, just like we're doing the, just like you've approved or indicated you would approve the PD.
Yeah, but Cody doesn't wanna make any changes tonight. So I'll go ahead and uh make the motion that we amend the budget to include the fireman longevity pay under the same scale in those numbers that uh Kobe suggested.
That would, that would, then it would be done for those three.
Those are.
Well, we've, we've already done police and dispatch, yeah.
Those are reflected in the numbers you have in front of you there.
So you made a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion concerning fireman longevity? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Alright, thank you very much.
So the way, the way this settles now, Colby, if I'm reading it right, is that we're gonna have about a, we're, we're projecting right now, if the budget's not changed anymore before the council approves it, we're looking at a four million dollar surplus in the budget.
That's correct.
Okay.
So the last two items we have on this is uh, street department certificate pay added to signs and markings. That's what James talked about at the budget meeting. Um, signal, signalization personnel, eight thousand two hundred and ninety-nine. That was the adjustment we talked about at the meeting. So the last thing's gonna be courts, equipment rental is reduced by twenty-three thousand dollars. So those are all the changes that we had discussed.
So uh, this packet that you handed to us tonight includes everything that we've discussed except what we just did for the firemen.
That's right.
Right.
Okay.
So is that um court decrease listed twice? Is that the same thing for equipment rentals?
So it, it decreases the expenditures in the court fund, which therefore reduces the transfer from the general fund to the court fund.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any additional questions of Colby or Cody or anyone concerning the proposed budget? Does anyone have any motions they'd like to make concerning the proposed budget?
I'll make a motion that we forward the budget um to council with recommendation for approval.
So do we need to get in a big hurry with two people gone? I mean.
I'm not in a big hurry.
I mean, I'm, I'm just asking. We got two guys gone that.
Yeah.
Are pretty local.
If we forward it to council, this would, if they're at the next council meeting, it'd give them an opportunity to discuss anything we wanna discuss.
You could, yeah.
Okay, I will amend my motion to what?
Just not to include a recommendation.
Oh, well, I forward, I would like to make a motion to forward the budget to council without a recommendation.
So what's your suggestion, Mike, is that you'd rather have another committee meeting?
Well, I'm just saying you've got two guys that's gone. I, I, I don't know if there's a big rush. I know we like to do it before the end of the year. We're November second. If we had a meeting, if we did it, if we met again, just to rehash everything and get everybody on the same page at the end of the month, you move it forward, the first meeting in December.
But then you're, okay, then you're down to one because we, unless you wanna have a second meeting after Christmas.
You got Thanksgiving coming up, so.
There's two people gone.
I'm kinda selfish. I'd just like to get it done as soon as we could get it done because it helps you guys. But, but I, I get your point and you could, you could forward it and discuss it next week at council. And if you're not ready, then you could forward it to the next committee meeting.
And we could schedule another budget meeting if we need to. Like if we got the council next week and there's just more that we need to discuss, you could say, we want one more just budget meeting to discuss this if you wanted to. Um, but we'll handle it however you want.
She the option to go ahead and deal with it if everybody's okay with it.
Yeah.
I did get a second, I think.
You amended it. I'll second it and, and it'll give us the opportunity next council meeting to push it on down or approve it. So I'm good with that.
Okay, the motion is to forward the amended uh proposed budget to council without recommendation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Alright, that's what we'll do then. And if there's anything further. Think we're adjourned. Thank you.